Great. Okay. I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council's special meeting of September 13th, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand electronically if you want to make sure I'll see it, or by just waving your hand, and there's a chance I will. And I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record in the public. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Yurin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Steve, will you lead us in the pledge?
Would Steve?
Yurin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. May we have a roll call vote? I'm sorry, Bruce? Can't hear you, Bruce.
Thank you. I would like to propose that we adjourn the special meeting in honor of the gentleman who was attacked at Dan Blocker Beach by a man with a machete who was living unhoused and unregulated on the beach and who claimed the land to be his territory that could be defended by deadly force against the public. I believe his name is Alvaricio Perez.
So I think that that's a good idea to remember him, and this is an opportunity to tell people that there is a GoFundMe page that was put up by a lady who works at the Boys and Girls Club. And we'll see if somebody can post the, uh, the, that address for us. Okay? So with that modification of the agenda, can we now have a vote, Kelsey?
Councilmembers Pearson and Fair, are you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kelsey. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 7th, 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a, uh... On the, do we have a staff report on item 1A, an amendment to the camping ordinance?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. See, Parker, are you plant? There we go, thank you. All right, next slide. So as you know, by now we have had 18 fires since the beginning of the year that were started in homeless encampments. The city council and staff have taken a variety of actions to address this threat, including updating the nuisance code, declaring a local emergency. And now this proposed amendment to the camping ordinance is another part of this overall effort to protect the community and our unhoused community as well. And it is crafted in a way to comply with the Martin v. Boise decision, which has made it difficult to enforce our current ordinance. Next slide. Okay. So in the Martin v. Boise decision, essentially what it does is it, it says, it prohibits imposing criminal penalties for sitting, lying, or sleeping outside on public property if an individual is unable to obtain shelter. However, this doesn't prohibit a city from regulating where unhoused individuals can sit, lie, or sleep within a city. So, next slide. Our existing ordinance is, is very short and all-inclusive. It just says no person shall camp, lodge, or sleep overnight in any public park, public beach, etc. But it doesn't recognize individuals who have no alternative location to sleep that's required in the Boise decision. Next slide. So the amendments that are being proposed, first, we'll start out with where we are prohibiting camping, which would include city-owned public parks, beaches, public streets, public right-of-ways, and also vacant and enveloped private property in which camping is, is prohibited. And upon any land designated by the fire chief or city manager posing an extreme fire hazard risk. So it's a little bit of a more detailed description of where camping is prohibited. Next slide. It also prohibits activities that are related to camping, including starting or building or using a fire, discharging waste, disposing of trash in places that are not permitted, and using or erecting camping facility or paraphernalia, which essentially means tents, cots, hammocks, those kinds of items. Next slide. So in order to be in compliance with Boise, while we've described all these places that is prohibited and things that you're prohibited from doing, you know, camping facilities, etc., there is an exception in the proposed ordinance that if an individual is not posing any immediate threat to public health, safety, or welfare of the community, the ordinance will not be used to, to be enforced against individuals based solely on the fact that they are sitting, lying, or sleeping on city-owned public property when they do not have access to adequate temporary shelter. Next slide. Also, within that area, so, you know, thinking back to that last statement, so individuals who are not posing an immediate threat, who do not have access to adequate shelter, even for that exception, there is a strict prohibition against being within 200 feet of a residence, 1,500 feet of a school or daycare or that type of place. Public right-of-way, you can't obstruct a public right-of-way. And then also locations that are determined by the city manager, public safety manager, or city council that constitute an extreme fire danger. Excellent. And that really summarizes it, I think, at this point. I'll, Mikey Pearson and Bruce Silverstein were obviously, you know, kind of lead architects along with the city attorney and development of this ordinance. So I think I'll pass over to them to see if they have additional comments on this.
I believe we have to take public comments first. Kelsey, how many speakers do we have on this item?
Hey, Eric Grisanti, you don't have any speakers on this item.
Wow. I think people have heard that this may be something everybody's in favor of. Okay. Let's, uh, let's go to council comments and let's use, uh, let's get Bruce and Mikey in first. And Mike, Bruce has raised his hand.
Mike, if you'd rather go first, I'm happy to defer. Okay, so I, I'm, I'm hoping this is going to be an easy one. And Paul has said to me in the past, when it looks easy, don't say too much. But there are just some things that need to be said for the record. Um, th- this is intended to help protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community from various dangers associated with people living unhoused and unregulated in our city. And it's not just fire, as is evident by the machete attack two weeks ago. And this also addresses public health issues as well as general criminal matters. So I, I just want to make clear, Martin versus Boise doesn't establish any rights of homeless people. It simply holds that the Eighth Amendment, that's the Eighth Amendment rights that every single person in this country has are violated when a municipality criminalizes the mere act of sitting, lying, or sleeping in public when a person doesn't have any access, reasonable access to temporary shelter. It's that simple. The decision leaves open a very wide range of permissible government action that falls short of that limited act that's prohibited. And it permits, as Susan explained, government regulations on time, place, and manner of living unhoused in public. There are many reasons, as I've articulated in the past, that Martin versus Boise doesn't apply to the facts on the ground in Malibu, including but not limited to the fact that all but a handful, at most, of people living unhoused in Malibu were actually from Malibu, as opposed to people who have traveled to Malibu to live unhoused in public in Malibu. That is a stark distinction from Boise and from every other city where Martin has been applied. The other stark distinction is we are one of a handful of cities that is designated in the entirety as a very high fire hazard severity zone. No court has addressed the question of what, to what extent does that decision apply in those circumstances? But in any event, as Susan said, we've been extremely careful and conservative to craft this legislate, this proposed legislation to fit within the contours of that decision on the assumption it applies. That way, if it's challenged, we'll be able to say we've complied with the, with the, with the rule of that decision. But also, we can argue it doesn't apply, the rule doesn't apply at all anyway. Um, and significantly, I'm surprised, I thought Jim Braden was going to speak as a member of the public. Maybe, maybe we can ask him. I had understood that he was going to explain that, that the Lost Hills Sheriff's Department, the sheriff's station is supportive of what we're doing and will do what it can to enforce this, this legislation if we adopt it. Um, I just want to say also, at the last minute today, we got a comment from MRCA, a written comment, and I think it needs to be addressed to complete the record. Um, this has been, this, this proposal's been on the table for a month. We, we spoke about it at the prior meeting, we aired it at the meeting, and it's been again on the agenda for three weeks since then. But we received a letter from MRCA today. They argue it's overbroad, vague, and invest too much discretion in the city manager and city council. They contend that it somehow allows us to prohibit camping basically on their property and other areas where camping is explicitly permitted. They're wrong. We already, first of all, we already have a blanket prohibition, as Susan explained, against camping in Malibu. That's been on the books for 20 years. And it exempts areas where camping specifically permitted. So does this. This doesn't override that. This applies to city-owned public space, parks, and beaches, not to MRCA's land, not to the county's land, not to the state's land. That's up to them to regulate. We can't regulate their land. Um, the, this ordinance is less restrictive than the existing no camping ordinance, because that one's a blanket prohibition which criminalizes any lying, sleeping, or sitting in public. So we've carved that back. This does less than that. This allow, this, this exempts from, or this suspends the enforcement of that act. In fact, there's a separate piece of this that expressly says it does that. We, we are suspending enforcement of the other statute in place of this one for the time, in, in, unless and until we get clearance that Martin versus Boise doesn't apply here and all bets are off at that point. But we are not doing what the MRCA says we're doing. In any event, we, we pretty much have an emergency here, as evidenced again by the latest attack. We have to do something. We can always carve this back if it turns out we have to. We can, we can tweak it, but you know, to, to tell us at the last minute after we've been proposing this for a month that they have problems with this isn't appropriate. But we can address any legitimate objections they have. And I don't think the objections they've addressed are, that they've raised are legitimate. But we can address them even after we pass this. Legislation can always be amended. So, um, with that, I mean, I'm, I'm very pleased that we're doing this tonight. I hope we're going to approve this. Um, I've been working hard to get something like this in place almost the year now. Uh, and Mikey's help, I think we've gotten it over the finish line. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. I see that Jim Braden has, has interpreted your, your request for comment to raise his hand, so I'm gonna butt in front of you, Mikey, and put Jim Braden up.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Jim.
Oh, okay. The, uh, I've read through this and read through all the Martin versus Boise stuff, and I think Bruce is absolutely right. All the specific regulations, it's allowed under Martin versus Boise. So the, uh, I think it's crafted in a way that we can initiate this, and I think it's a good thing in that it, it can accomplish exactly what Bruce is saying. Not just for fire danger, it's for the safety of the public in all aspects, including their safety, including health, including the fire danger. And I think it's a good direction to go in, and it puts some structure to the city and in regulating all these, uh, unhoused homeless people.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm open to any questions anybody might have.
I think we're good, but we may call on you again. Mikey, I, I think you're up.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Jim. Um, so Bruce was pretty thorough. We, we did spend a lot of time on this. Um, a lot of, uh, really getting into the details, into, into the weeds, so to speak, on camping ordinance. And it was done in conjunction, as, as Bruce and, and Jim said, with the sheriff's department. I, uh, I had a chance to even talk with Sheriff Vianueva, uh, with Karen next to me virtually about this. And, um, so I, I think we've done our best job to vet this entirely. A couple of things I want to add. There is a public speaker who is unable to get in to support this, Tracy Park, so many of us know her, who was attacked recently by a homeless person. Um, she's pretty frustrated right now, she can't get in to speak. So I want to at least speak up for her, I don't know how to help her get into Zoom right now, um, or what's going on there. So, um, just want to express that, uh, a member of the public who has had firsthand experiences did want to speak and just can't figure it out. And, and I want to express that it's disappointing to me that, uh, MRCA would send a letter this late. And I, I know the legal reasons, people wait to the last minute, they just want to get it on record. But, you know, it'd just be nice at, at some point if, uh, if, um, it didn't have to be that way. And I actually see that Kelsey has her hand raised, so I want to ask Kelsey to speak.
Yeah.
That's your privilege, Mikey, Kelsey.
I just heard concern about a member of the public not being able to join the meeting. So if she's maybe listening to the YouTube stream or another option and wants to get into the Zoom, she can contact our media technician, Parker Davis, at 424-395-6433. That's 424-395-6433. And that is posted on our virtual meeting webpage.
Thank you, Kelsey. And congratulations again, very professional and very excited to have you as our city clerk. Um, so I, I don't, I don't want to belabor the point. Um, we did spend a lot of time on this, it's been said multiple times. Um, and, um, I just want to thank everyone for their work on this. And that would be obviously Bruce, John, Susan, talking with the sheriff. So, um, it was, it was a concerted effort. So I just want to thank everyone for fast-tracking this and working on it so hard. And that's it for now.
Also, I'd like to say, Mikey, and Jim Braden and, um, and others there were of immense help.
Exactly.
Chuck, and Chuck Becerra.
Yes, exactly.
Great. Karen, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Paul. Um, yeah, I too just want to thank everybody involved. Mayor Protem Silverstein, councilmember Pearson, Lieutenant Braden, Captain Becerra, Susan Duñez, and our interim city attorney, John Cotty. And the fact that this iteration of the proposal has the endorsement of both the interim city attorney and the sheriff's department demonstrates to me that this is viable. So I, I know a lot of time was spent on this, and I just want to express my appreciation. Um, and I did want to ask if, uh, our interim city attorney, John Cotty, has anything to add to the discussion.
Councilmember Fair, I, I said a lot at the last meeting, I think this ordinance is, is viable. I think it's legal, and I'm thrilled, uh, Lieutenant Braden has come on board to support it. Um, this was a, a labor of love between a lot of people and over a lot of, over a long period of time. So, um, it's an important piece of legislation for the city of Malibu, and I'm happy that it's, uh, before you tonight for consideration.
Thank you, John. Steve, it looks like you're up, Mr. Yurin.
I just want to echo the comments of everybody here. I think this is, I think, John, you're right, this is a labor of love, not only on the part of the city council, but I think on the part of the residents. Uh, you know, ever since I started running for city council, the number one issue that everybody talked about was how we're going to deal with the homeless issue. I think we have provided a solution. Uh, we're going to see how it works out, but I think this is a demonstration that your city government can in fact do something to help you out. And I'd like to thank everybody who participated in putting this together, because you guys did a heck of a job. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Steve. I'd like to join the chorus of thanking everybody and include the Public Safety Committee as well. I know that they've had a lot of input as to the various, and interact all the time with the sheriff's department, I really appreciate that. I appreciate the heck out of the sheriff's department. It's been wonderful to see how behind this they are. And I appreciate the fact that the community in Malibu wants this. And I'm gonna recognize Mikey Pearson. Are you gonna make a motion perhaps? Can't hear you.
I will finish with a motion. I just want to add a couple of last thoughts. Just, just to be sure again, this is not going to cure our homeless issue. That's not what this does. As many of you know, I've worked in dealing with homelessness for a lot of years. This isn't that. This is public safety, public health. This is, this is the safety of our, of our residents, both housed and unhoused. Um, we are very lucky to this point. We have not had a far worse issue related to fire on top of the issues we've already had. And we've had way too many issues, some that are just completely unrelated to this issue and some that are related. So this is just another piece, and there's more pieces to come. That's what our task force is doing. Can't talk about it here, but we had a meeting this morning with a, a few people on another program that could be really, really helpful as an add-on to this. So your city is not done trying to deal with this issue. This isn't like we walk away. This, this will not cure some of the issues you see. And the second part of that is I see some of the media's here. We need everyone in this city to let us know what they see. We don't have eyes and ears everywhere. You are the eyes and the ears of what's going on in this city. We need to know, and there's a few residents that have been incredibly helpful. Uh, when you see encampments, when you see issues, when you see dangerous situations, when you see, you know, just things that worry you around this issue. And there's a lot to see at times. But if we don't know, we can't act on it. So those are my final words. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve this item.
I'll, I'll second the motion. Yeah, I'll second the motion. I just want to say also to echo, I echo everything that, that Mikey just said. You know, we're not, we are never going to cure homelessness. The city of Malibu isn't going to make a dent in curing homelessness. That is a worldwide, at least in this country, national effort that needs to be done. And all we can do is do our best to protect the residents of our city. And secondly, as best we can, make the people who are here comfortable. But at the end of the day, we're not going to be able to fix this problem. This is a problem for our government, for our larger government.
Thank you, Bruce. Kelsey, uh, would you like to take a role on that motion? And the second motion by Mikey and the second from Bruce?
Mayor Grisanti, if I could read the title of the ordinance?
If you would do so, I would appreciate it, John.
Thank you. This is ordinance number 492, an ordinance of the city of Malibu amending sections 9.08030 of Malibu municipal code, sitting or lying on public ways, and 9.08.090 of Malibu municipal code, camping, lodging, sleeping overnight on public property, enacting amended and supplemental camping regulations as chapter 8.36 of Title 8 of the code, and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. Kelsey, can you take the role, please?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Uh, next, we go to item number 2A, which is about automatic license plate readers. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, you do, Mayor Grisanti. So in 2010, the city council approved the purchase of one mobile automatic license plate reader, which was installed on a sheriff's vehicle that was supposed to be exclusively deployed in Malibu. At the time, the council only approved one because of the cost of the cameras. At that time, a fixed camera was about $12,000 to $18,000. A mobile camera was $32,000. And they made the decision to get one camera as a mobile and just kind of tried out to see how that went. Since that time, it has been effective at helping deputies identify vehicles that were associated with crimes and then are able to, you know, apprehend suspects, which is very helpful. But it's just one vehicle, just one camera. So it does have its limitations. Therefore, at the April 7, 2020 Public Safety Commission meeting, Lieutenant Braden, Lieutenant Fender from Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, provided a presentation about some of the more, you know, the latest, greatest automatic license plate reader systems that are available. And the cost for these systems has come down considerably. For example, fixed cameras now are about $2,500 apiece as opposed to $12,000 to $18,000. And that's for a per-year cost. And for that, you're getting hardware, software upgrades. And then there's a one-time installation cost. Whether the cameras are fixed or mobile, they function kind of the same way. They take multiple pictures all day long as vehicles pass by. And they're only getting the license plate, maybe the make and model of the car. They get that information. All this gets uploaded into an encrypted cloud server. Once it's in the cloud server, the system software identifies license plate, vehicle make, type, color, and holds the information for a set period of time, which is determined by the administrator. And from talking to their agencies, 30 days seems to be a pretty common period of time of holding that information. And usually it's just controlled by a very small group of people because it's really just to be made for use by the Sheriff's Department. So essentially, the city would hold the kind of the keys to the data, but they let the sheriffs in to help them with their if they're looking for someone. So how it works is if there's a crime and somebody knows the approximate time of day, maybe some details about the vehicle, they can go into the system and possibly locate the vehicle. And then it can help them solve the crime. It also can trigger alerts to deputies if a camera identifies a vehicle that's already in the system as being wanted in association with the crime. It can alert deputies that are in town, and then they could possibly, hopefully, you know, locate the vehicle, pull them over, and investigate. So it's been very helpful in a lot of other communities for solving crimes. And I know Lou Print and Lieutenant Braden's here, and perhaps he can comment a bit further on that after I'm done. So the Public Safety Commission, they voted unanimously to recommend that the city council authorize the purchase of at least eight fixed license plate readers. They were thinking that we could work with the Sheriff's Department to determine the most effective locations, which would be, you know, primary entrances and exits from the city. And then we would control the information and model it on Calabasas. Calabasas just implemented this same program. So we would reach out to them and kind of, you know, model how they're doing that to make sure that the data is secure and only used for its intended purpose. And the commission also recommended that perhaps we just do it as a two-year pilot project and have a report back in two years to determine if it's working the way we want it to work to justify the expense. And that's my staff report, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have any members of the public who've signed up to speak on this, Kelsey?
Yes, we have one speaker for this item, Doug Stewart.
Doug, I see you in the meeting. Can you unmute Doug?
There we go. Here I am. All right. Well, first off, I want to thank the council members for having this. Can you hear me, by the way?
We can hear you just fine. Thank you.
I want to make, I want to know how much we appreciate the fact that this is on an agenda on an expedited basis. This is a very important item. The Public Safety Commission feels that it's very appropriate to move it as quickly as possible. And I am speaking as vice chairman of the Public Safety Commission on behalf of the commission. As Susan so eloquently put it, she put most of my comments already in her report. We held two meetings on this topic. We had an extensive session with Lieutenant Fender, who is the Jim Braden counterpart in Calabasas and a subject expert in the Sheriff's Department on these cameras. And between what Lieutenant Fender said and the support from Captain Becerra and Lieutenant Braden, you get the feeling that this is a very important tool for the Sheriff's Department and has been widely used throughout the county already. And to be honest with you, we actually have one of these cameras, they're called flock cameras, in Malibu already. The Winding Way Homeowners Association uses it to monitor the traffic going up and down their private road there by the parking lot. So we feel like it's an excellent addition to our crime solution and control. And as Susan said, this is really not so much for real-time scanning of license plates and somebody watching on a screen. It's for when something happens and the detectives need to do a data search. The idea also that this is on a hot list where someone could actually get a report that a stolen car is driven by or whatever. It's good to know, but it's probably not going to be real time. That's what the car mounted one is for. But it will tell them that that car passed by or it's coming back through the city on a regular basis, and they'll know where to look. So it's a very useful tool for the Sheriff's Department, just a force multiplier, as we commonly say. I would like to mention that it's only scans the license plates, as Susan said, and the make and model of the car. You can see the color of it and so forth. So if they are looking for, say, a white Toyota, it does give them some sorting capabilities to find that. And this is not speed radar either. That's not permitted in the state of California. You can't do radar traps by camera. And this is really just a license plate reader, and the data will be closely controlled by the city. And one of the emphasis that we had, especially with the flock people, was that we want the city to own the data. And that way, we control who has access to it. This is not being handed over to the Sheriff's Department. It's being handled through the city for the benefit of the Sheriff's Department, and we control who has access to it. So with that, I want to tell everyone how much we appreciate your moving this forward. The A and F committee was very helpful when we talked to them earlier. And one last comment, appreciate very much the camping ordinance. Very good job done. We all appreciate that. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe that takes us to council comments and discussion. I see Mikey's hand is raised, followed by Bruce's.
Thank you, Mayor. A number of months ago, Chris Frost and I met with James Lieutenant Braden and Captain Becerra at Lost Hills and talked about public safety. I'm bad at time. Six, eight months ago? Who knows? Something like that. The question I asked during that meeting, what do you want? What do you need? What can we do to help you? And by approving this, we will have actually done every single thing on that list. By approving the extra money for for deputies, for a motor, and then this, that completes the list. And when I met with Sheriff Vianueva, I was able to tell him. And he expressed back to me that he doesn't hear that in other communities. He's going to. And the fact we take public safety so seriously really was something he commented on in his public comments. The one thing I want to add is that at A and F, we went over this item. The actual number we approved is enough money for nine cameras, because apparently the count is off at eight. And nine is the number needed to fully kind of cover all the ins and outs of the city. I don't have the detail. I did hear the nine locations. I do not remember. So sitting here, but we did approve enough money to do nine at our A and F meeting. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Bruce?
Okay, thanks. So I'm totally supportive of this. I just want to say, I've heard some members of the public voice objection that this is somehow unconstitutional invasion of people's privacy. And I just don't get that. You drive around in a car, you're out in public. Anybody can see what your license plate is. This is just a machine that does what a person could do more efficiently, frankly. I have a question for Doug Stewart. If I could, I just don't understand why it matters that we control access to the information because of basically what I just said. What just what was the importance of that? I just don't understand that issue that you flagged.
Doug, are you available to jump back in and answer that question?
Yes, here I am. Thank you, Bruce. Yeah, the reason why we emphasize that is we wanted to let's call it submit the idea that we own this data. And it's not going to be handed over to the Sheriff's Department to be used for a purpose that we may not agree with. We own these cameras or we lease these cameras, and it's our data, and we share it as we feel the rightful best use is. It's just another layer of control. As you as an attorney, we own the data, so we license who gets to play with it.
Okay, I get that it's always better to be in control, and I appreciate that. I'm just curious, is there some kind of use, though, that somebody else might make of it that we actually have a concern about, or it's just a question of it's better to have control than not?
Well, I don't practice law without a license. I'll tell you, it's better to own it than it is to try and get it back. So we were very emphatic about that. And there's Falcon Camera people, flock camera people, mentioned that that was a critical issue for a lot of cities. So we emphasize that.
Yeah, that's what they told me, too, that that's how most cities have it set up, that the cities, they basically have the license for the system, they're the administrator, and then they allow the sheriff in.
But it's not based on any concern about what someone else might make of the data. It's just a question of it's better to own it than not to own it. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's right.
Okay.
And Councilmember Silverstein, I would note also that in the Public Records Act, ALPR data is exempt from disclosure under the act unless it can be anonymized, which at current, I don't believe it can be. It would be different disclosure.
Cool.
Steve, looks like you're up.
And Bruce, just to go back to your question. I wish we lived in a society where everybody's objectives were forthright and focused on getting the right thing done. We don't. And if you look around, you know, people, if they got access to information, God knows what they want to do with it, what they're going to, you know, there are people who are trying to look at somebody else for no particular reason other than to pursue their own interest. And we just don't want to let that happen. So I want to go back. I mean, I don't have a problem with the readers, but I want to go back to a couple of things. This data is not public data, so it can't be accessed through a public records information. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. Who is the administrator? That sets the time of how long this lasts. I mean, look, if I'm on the sheriff's side, the sheriff says, you know, I've got a crime over here that maybe something happened 60 days ago, that if I could go back and look at that video, that may help me make a better decision or apprehend what was going on. So I don't want to do anything with this thing that is going to in any way slow down our ability to get the enforcement that we need. But who administers this stuff? Who is the person that says this is not long, I'm going to keep it. This is going to get access to it? Who is that person? I say.
I think that's a good question. I mean, I don't think we've identified the exact person. But it'll be someone at the city, and I think that they would work in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department to determine what is, how much time should this data be held for a reasonable period of time for doing their investigations?
I'd like to know what that is. You know, and like I said, I'm not opposed to these readers. This just privacy is something that is becoming a cherished item in today's world, right? I got cameras, you know. So making sure that we're not feeding information to somebody that has, may not have the same lofty objectives that we have, I just think is something that we should take a look at and make sure that we're doing. So I'd love to know who this administrator is. And I'd like to know what the administrator's rules are going to be. I want to know, I'd like to know who's going to substitute for the administrator if they go on vacation. I mean, let's just make sure we got this puppy tied down so that if anything happens in the future, we said we've done our job to try and protect it as best we can. That's what I'd like to know.
Well, I do believe that the administrator, it's not like and I may have misunderstood what you're saying, but it's not like the Sheriff's Department has to reach out to us every time they want to search the data. Basically, we give them user access, is my impression. And maybe Jim Braden, Lieutenant Braden, because maybe elaborate on that. But my impression is that we allow them access to the data, but we still are the gatekeeper. So if we decide at some point that is, you know.
Is there everybody in the Sheriff's Department's got access to the data? Is it a limited? Look.
It's probably limited, but you know, maybe Lieutenant Braden, I don't know if you could elaborate that on how that works or how you've seen it work.
Yeah, I can comment on it. The, go kind of back to what Bruce said. This is the same data that someone in a sheriff's car can run. The beauty of this type system, it's just like the one on the car. The car costs way more because there's not one camera head on it. There's about 12 camera heads on it. Because it does forward, backward, sideways, angles, all these things. And what this thing can pick up, it reads plates on cars and the it reads anyone, any registered owner with warrants. It reads stolen cars. It reads any entity that's put a want on a car for a reason. It could be the DEA. It could be different things. But if they were at points coming in and out from the canyons, from the in and out of the city, basically, it gives an alert. Other cities do this. Hidden Hills has them at their gates, coming into their city. And it'll hit on a warrant. It goes to the desk, which goes to a patrol unit, which goes looking for the car. So you have that. The, you got to remember, like, the Sheriff's Department and deputies have access to everybody's information. However, there's strict laws that go along with that. And yeah, the, like those fixed cameras, the administrator would give access to Detective Bureau. Detective Bureau, they would do it based off investigations. It's just like, oh, if there was a white car and the three first letters on license plate were this, and they assaulted someone at Surf Rider, there's a good possibility that we can actually come up with a car. And the so there is limited access to who gets access to it. Most cities are the ones that subscribe and hold the control over it. It's not like the Sheriff's Department has all these controls over this stuff. The but the access to the stuff, it is somewhat limited. But any deputy in any car can run a plate on a car. They're allowed. Bruce is absolutely right. It's public. And it's better than it ever was. No one's allowed to be running around with their galping plate things on. Everybody has to have a numeric identifier on the car. So it is a step into technology, which I sent out to a lot of you, like we had the DNA hit last week from a pursuit. And these guys threw a gun down, did all this stuff. And the only thing to save us in the case is that the guy, when he got punched in the face by the airbag, left some blood on it. So it assists us. These cameras can work in the same way. It's a step in the right direction. It's not some perfectness, solve all your crimes or anything else. It's stepping into technology to assist in minimizing crime in Malibu. And even people realize when there's these cameras and stuff, it can deter people from coming to the city to try to do crimes. You know, a lot of people, even when they rob banks or do anything else, they steal cars first. If the car's put in the system and it hits right when it comes in Malibu, that's a great thing right there. Also, people with warrants coming into the city, a lot of people, and it's a small percentage of the population or repeat customers of ours that have all kinds of warrants, no bail warrants, all these different things, which when they do have a car, it's associated with the car. So it can assist us in doing our job. But like worrying about, oh, it's all this access and stuff, we already have access to all this stuff. And there's laws that go along with it. And there's people that get fired for this stuff. You can't access someone's information just because you want to. There has to be a legitimate nexus for that running of a person or anything else. So For that uh, running of a person or anything else. So there is control over it, so.
Okay, I I I still don't have my answer that says who is the administrator.
Well, that would.
And that's you, Jim. This is more for the city.
Okay.
Now, look, and I don't disagree. Look, I am, I do not want to do anything which diminishes the ability of the Sheriff's Department to get their job done. All right, so.
Well, I.
I'm not going anywhere near that. I want you to, I I have been a supporter of your efforts. I want to continue to support your efforts. If we can give you some help to get those done, I'm on that train, right?
Right.
My my and I I understand technology. I mean, technology has changed the way we live. Uh, it will continue to do that. And sometimes you just got to make sure you've got control over the technology you're using so that we're not going to get, you know, burnt by it somewhere down the line. And that's all I'm trying to do. We've got, it says we got an administrator. I don't know who the administrator is. We've got policies. I don't know what those policies are. I mean, it seems to me that if I'm doing this, I should have some of that defined before we go down this train or, you know, or give me, come back to me in thirty days with that information. Something, but let's, look, the residents are looking to us to do the right thing. And to do the right thing, we got to make decisions based upon information that we have. And the and we're making decisions based upon the information to protect not only what we want the sheriffs to do, but the residents. I just like some answers. That's all I want to, that's all I'm looking for.
Thank you, Steve. Karen, I think you're next.
Thank you, Paul. Um, I do have one question, uh, and I'm not even sure who this is directed to, but can anyone comment? On the recommendation for eight readers? As opposed to the nine referenced by Councilmember Pearson?
Yeah, because the eight readers, that was the official recommendation from the Public Safety Commission. So that's their recommendation that they made at their meeting, but then at A and F, they provided. A budget, they recommended a budget to allow for nine if the council decided to allow for up to nine.
Okay, thank you, Susan. All right, I think we ought to consider that. And I welcome any other comments from other council members, but I I would like to consider the nine.
I I I think for my talks with Chris Frost, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, I think nine's a number.
Except the report says eight.
Details, details.
Right.
Okay, I'm I'm happy to make a motion. Do we have other comments?
I'll second it.
Paul, you're muted. You've been trying to talk, it looks like.
You got hands up all over the place.
Paul, you're muted.
Interesting. Didn't need to do that. Uh, Karen, uh, Steve McClary's had his hand up for a while. I'd like to get him in. And then we'll return to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. I just wanted to answer the question posed by Councilmember Irving. The administrator would be uh, named by the city manager. Uh, at this point, my indication of my thought would be that that would be our public safety manager that is the I think the most natural choice for that. Uh, and I do think we do need to come back uh. With the development of some policy and protocols on how we will handle uh, the sharing of that information and be happy to develop that. Uh, and bring that back, uh, as you say, within thirty days. Right. That's all I wanted to share. And then as to the the ninth uh, camera. Um, I don't think staff has any objection to that. I I I think I would have to defer to. Our assistant city manager, but I believe we have the appropriate, the appropriations for that and enough funding. And then I would have to defer to our public safety manager, but I I do believe that we have nine locations identified. That would be the only thing. I just want to make sure if we go forward with a motion here that we. A have the funding identified and that we know where the ninth location would be. Thank you.
I see Lisa shaking her head yes. Would you like to say something, Lisa?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the. It's noted in the staff report and the Administration of Finance Subcommittee did. Uh, recommend to appropriate twenty-five thousand, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, which would cover. Up nine readers, um, as my understanding is, and so we do have the funds in place. Um, so that's not a problem. I think the the distinction really was in the staff report was that the full Public Safety Commission as a body. Recommended eight. You had two members showing up to the Administration Finance Subcommittee and said. Oh, we really do want nine, but from our perspective, that's fine. The money's there. Um. And as my understanding was, and Susan can clarify. Um, this is authorizing the appropriation of the funds for this purpose and moving forward with the item, but that we would go out. To solicit proposals because I believe there are a few vendors that make these. Is that correct, Susan? So, yeah. So I would imagine. Um, we'll find the best deal that we can.
Bruce, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, well, first of all, I didn't know if there was a second. If there wasn't, I will second the motion. I just want to say Benjamin Franklin wisely warned that those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. The Constitution sets the parameters of our liberty. This is well within those parameters, and the only people who really have anything to fear from this. Are people who are violating the law. So we satisfy that well honored test of safety and liberty, and I thoroughly support this.
So Bruce, I understand you just uh. You just seconded Karen's motion, which I don't believe she actually got to finish making. Would you like to finish making the motion, Karen?
Sure. Thank you, Paul. Uh, yeah, I move to uh. Uh, approve item number two A, automatic license plate readers, and I believe the number we are aiming for is nine as opposed to eight, which is in the written recommendation.
That's you, and I've got a second from Bruce. And I see Steve wants to discuss it.
No, I'd just like to make a friendly amendment that we included. That we included in the motion, this Steve McClary's offer to come back in thirty days with the more detail about how we're going to administer this thing.
So we have a request for a friendly amendment. Karen, is that okay with you?
Uh, I would qualify my response on um, a response by the city manager, interim city manager.
Mr. McClary?
Yeah, that seems uh, doable and appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Then accepted.
Bruce, will you accept the modification of your second?
Yes.
Kelsey, would you like to take the role?
Councilmember Eric?
Yes.
Mayor Prochem Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Okay. We're moving on to item two B. Which is a Malibu Arts Association fee, event fee waiver. And it looks like we have a staff report.
Uh, just a quick staff report. Good evening, Mayor Grisanti and members of City Council. Uh, the item before you this evening is a request from the Malibu Arts Association. Uh, to waive facility staffing and permit fees for up to five art show events at Legacy Park. Uh, the council recalls on July twelfth, you approved a similar request from the Arts Association to hold the first show. At Legacy Park, which took place on August eighth. The event had fourteen artists and proceeds from that event allowed the Arts Association to raise funds for student scholarships and book purchases for the Malibu Library. So following that event, the Arts Association reached out to us and expressed their desire to move forward with holding additional events. So. They're looking to hold two additional events and through the remainder of two thousand twenty-one, and then three additional events during the first half of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the total event of the total amount of the fee waiver for each event is twelve hundred or one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And that's a total of six thousand three hundred and ninety dollars for all five events. And as I mentioned before, that includes. Facility use fees, staffing fees, and the temporary use permit fee, which is required for each of these events. Uh, I also know the council's heard this many times, but the the municipal code allows for up to six temporary use permits per calendar year per per parcel. So if approved, the these events would utilize a total of three of the TUPs for two thousand twenty-one, including the August event, which already took place. And then three of the six TUPs for two thousand twenty-two, for the two thousand twenty-two calendar year. Um, have I to answer any additional questions you have? I know that I saw Barbara Freund Freund is also here from the Malibu Arts Association, who can also help answer. Uh, any additional questions regarding the Arts Association specifically or the event?
Thank you, Jesse. I see Steve Uring has his hand raised.
See if there's any public comment, first of all.
I'm sorry, thank you. Is there any public comment, Kelsey? Is anyone registered?
Yes, Barbara Freund has signed up to speak.
Barbara, are you available to speak to us?
Uh, yes, good afternoon, everybody. I I had signed up to speak really just to answer any questions that you all might have. Uh, to thank you for considering some additional requests and to thank you for having approved the August event. Um, it really was extraordinarily well received and I was um, I was really happy to get to see a few of you there um, at the event as well. We did raise some significant funds for our annual scholarship fund for Malibu High School graduating seniors. And the year's not out yet, so we hope to be able to add to that um, to that pot again. Um, so we are hoping we we did hear over and over again. Um, and I think some of you actually heard it as well, when visitors were stopping by various artists grids. Um, how excited they were that the art was there, and they asked us if we were going to be there every Sunday. Um, so it, you know, it was exciting for the artists to be able to get out again and share uh, their their creativity. I think it was very exciting for the residents of Malibu and the visitors as well, to be able to see what some of the local artists are producing. And then just the final thing I wanted to add was. We don't, we do not charge the artists an exhibit fee. We do ask them um, to to um, donate a portion of their. Sales proceeds to the scholarship fund. That is how we're able to raise money through the sales of the paintings. Um, the pandemic was particularly hard on artists, as you can imagine, and so. We feel very, very strongly about remaining committed to not having to charge our artist members to exhibit at this time. And.
Thank you. That's great. Steve, would you like to continue and Barbara hang around in case we have any more questions?
No, I think Barbara answered my question. I was. Wanted to get a better understanding of the fundraising component of this thing, but she helped me answer that, so I'm 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 comfortable.
I see Bruce is the next hand.
Thanks, Paul. So I I enthusiastically support this. I think that this is a perfect type of event for Legacy Park. Um, I. I hope I'm actually hope we can have perhaps like an art and craft type show. I, when I, before I moved to the West Coast, um, we used to have that in one in a town I lived in. By the river, and it was just a phenomenal event yearly. Um, I do have just two questions. One is about the TUP limit that Jesse mentioned. Does that apply to a city park? Or or I mean, are we are we as a city limited to six events in our parks, or can we go beyond that?
Yes, so we have the six TUP limit for all of our parks, and we actually, we. Have this issue even at Bluffs, where we have a lot of events. So that's something we're very familiar with, but yes, it does apply to those those parks as well.
I was gonna just put a pin in, maybe we should look into whether that's something we should by legislation alter, because I, it doesn't seem right to me that a city should be prohibited from having more than six events. In public, for the for the benefit of the public on public property. The other question I have is for, um, Barbara, was it? I, I just, I I. I'm just curious, as a financial matter, did you raise more money than this would have cost to be put on had we not waived the fee?
I'm mute here. Um, for this particular show, no, we did not raise more than what the fee would have charged. Um, and because I am the treasurer of the association, so I believe our our total income for that particular show was six or seven hundred dollars. Um, there were, I I think. I think eight either eight artists out of the fourteen sold paintings, um, some sold more than others. Um, uh, m- most of the paintings, I think, were in that were sold were in the hundred dollar range or maybe a little bit more than that. Um, and what we have the artist's pledge is fifteen percent of the sales proceeds. Um, you know, and that's something that can be looked at in the future also as, you know, hopefully as these events become. Um, more widely known and publicized and maybe more well attended by um, additional art collectors. That we will be seeing, you know, more revenue from that and um. You know, let's keep our fingers crossed for that, and hopefully we wouldn't even have to be asking for fee waivers in the not too distant future. But as it stands right now, we we would have been at a loss of about five hundred dollars or so.
Thank you, Barbara. And I I suspected that might have been the case, especially since of COVID. I mean, I was planning to go and then we got the more stringent. Ordinate directives and decided it's better to stay home safe, but I'll say. Um, I hopefully it will improve. We should keep track of that because it's a great event. It's 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 important publicly to showcase our local artists and to give our community an ability to to go there. But from a strictly financial position, I mean, if the city were to donate the money that that's being waived, it would actually contribute to the funds. That you're benefiting more than the event did. So that's kind of a strange financial balance that we have to make as council members, but I I do support this nonetheless. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Mikey?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this was a fabulous event. This was great. I I dropped by and spent time with Barbara and some of the other artists. This this to me is Malibu. This was, this was heart and soul of our city. It was in conjunction with the farmer's market across the street. We've already given parking to the farmer's market, so there was no parking issue at all. Matter of fact. There was no negative impact on of this event at all. And it was, it was really. There was a vibe there that was really, this city means more of. Of Malibu residents sharing their art, sharing their passion with residents and visitors alike. You, I was standing there and people were coming by and I heard, I heard people say, wow, you're doing this every weekend and. You know, it was really well done. Which leads me back to my broken record on our TUP system is broken. This should not have any impact on the amount of TUPs allowed in Legacy Park. This should not have this kind of fee attached to it. There's no impact. This should be an over the counter TUP application, in my opinion. That's my opinion at this point. Um. It it's, this is, this is why we're here. So. This will, I've been working with uh. I've been working with Trevor on this. This will be coming to, I guess it has to go to Zerasis, and it'll be coming, I believe, in our next Zerasis meeting to discuss our TUPs, because to me. This is where we're trying to do these great things to help the community, and we just, this is just a roadblock that's a failure, and it's unnecessary. And it makes it hard for Jesse to do his job and and, you know, it for no good reason, you know, good intentions at the time. But clearly, if you ordered this event, which was very COVID safe, by the way, because it was outdoor, it wasn't packed. Just a few people strolling around, everyone wearing masks. Um, so that that's my comments on it. I want to thank Barbara. Um, for her tenacity, um, and hanging in there. We've had a number of talks over the last months, and it has been really hard on her and. And um, and the local artists. So thank you very much for what you do, Barbara. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mikey.
Thank you, Mikey. Karen?
Oh, thank you, Paul. Yeah, I too want to thank Barbara and uh, everybody in the Malibu Arts Association. And I just want to say it is a great proposal for all the reasons everybody just mentioned, but I think it's also a big sign for us as a community. That we are turning the corner and we're going into a new phase of recovery and renewal. And recognition of our little local artists, and the scholarship fund is great for anybody who's ever had kids at Malibu High. The kids look forward to that. Uh, scholarship dinner or scholarship program at the end of the school year every year. And it's a great community event. I'm sorry I wasn't able to go, Barbara. I had a conflict, but from the photos I saw, I I feel like I knew every person that was there. So I really want to thank you for what you're doing and. For anybody who's ever been up to Santa Barbara, I'm sure probably most people have, on a Sunday, for decades, there's been the arts and crafts show. Um, and one of the requirements there is that the artist must prove that they're a local Santa Barbara. Um, and one of the requirements there is that the artist must prove that they're a local Santa Barbara resident, which I think is a great thing. So I just want to thank you, Barbara, and I want to say I fully support what you're doing. I fully support this, uh, this item and, um. I agree with Mikey. We, we may need to revisit our TUPs. Uh, so if we need a motion, I'm happy to make one to approve this.
Thank you.
Hoping to speak for just a moment.
Sorry, sorry about that.
So I'm gonna, I want to thank Barbara as well, and, uh, unfortunately, I had something else going on that morning and missed it. I agree with everything that's been said about the TUP problem we have here. It creates a lot of work and stops good things from happening, and I think we should make use of our public spaces. So if someone would like to make the motion.
I'll second it because I think Karen already made it.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second, apparently. May we call, have the roll call, Kelsey?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh. I'm going to thank everyone, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and we will see you all at six thirty. So. I think I can adjourn without anyone else making a motion, so I'm going to go ahead and do it.
Adios.
Thank you, everyone.
Great meeting, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.